Nous commencerons la réunion avec le appel de la réunion. Le Comité National de Planification Long-Term pour les Arts et les Faisons de la Maison Publice va conduire une réunion publique pour discuter du développement de la Maison de la fondation et cette réunion sera téléphonisée grâce à nos amis de CityView. Il y a beaucoup de conflits ce soir et j'apprécie que tout le monde se mette en route entre ici et à travers la rue pour la réunion de la commission historique. Je vais aussi remercier Paula Crane pour être notre procureur ce soir et si vous souhaitez être sur le record, et vous devriez être sur le record, inscrivez-vous. C'est aussi l'ordre dans lequel nous parlerons, donc visitez cette table et indiquez si vous souhaitez parler ou non. Et bien sûr, cette réunion est audiovisuellement enregistrée. Je remercie aussi le conseiller Carlin Deveraux d'être venu à cette réunion. Le conseiller Regouverne sent son regret qu'il avait un conflit inattendu au dernier instant, mais il a envoyé une importante déclaration qui, je pense, échoe à certains des sentiments que le conseil a réfléchi récemment et je lirai plus tard. J'ai une intro assez longue et je pense que envers les présentateurs, je garderai la plupart de cela après qu'ils présentent. Nous allons avoir, envers ceux qui vont en route entre ici et la commission historique, un court commentaire public avant la présentation, ce qui n'est pas inhabituel, juste par demande spéciale de ceux qui ne peuvent pas rester toute la journée. Donc au lieu de lire mes commentaires complets, je commence juste ici avec comment nous avons arrivés ici et puis nous allons directement à la réunion publique et la présentation et puis les conseillers vont discuter. La présentation est allocée d'une heure, mais je ne pense pas qu'elle prendra probablement une heure. Je pense que la présentation de l'été a pris une heure entière et cela devrait être une sorte de version abréviation de cela. Oh, un commentaire public quand nous commençons, par ailleurs, nous encourageons vous à garder deux ou trois minutes et si nous avons du temps à la fin, nous allons y aller. Mais cela devrait être une réunion longue et nous espérons que ça sera court et fin. Comment nous avons arrivés ici. La Maison de la fondation est un bâtiment spécial en termes de ce qu'elle est capable de... C'est un bâtiment de 50 000 pieds carrés sur la rue Rogers qui nous a hérité comme ville à travers un contrat de développeur où ils ont besoin de renoncer à certains de leurs demandes et nous avons reçu ce important piece de real estate dans ce qui est vraiment le plus innovant et commercialement riche partie de la ville, juste à l'extérieur de Kendall Square, comme partie de la grande zone de Kendall. Je pense que pendant longtemps, la ville était vue comme un albatros autour de l'administration de la ville, du conseil municipal, parce que vous devez mettre si grand que ce monnaie dans pour récupérer quelque chose. Je pense que c'est une perspective très raisonnable, mais tous ensemble en 2013, le conseil est devenu très intéressé par l'appropriation pour l'utilisation communautaire et beaucoup des communautés ont dit : "Nous voulons un prépondent, une grande majorité de l'utilisation communautaire. Nous ne voulons pas le minimum de 10 000 pieds qui a été écrit dans le plan de la zone". Ça a devenu un point majeur de notre discussion. La ville a presque immédiatement allocué plus de 4 millions de dollars pour sa renovation et a discuté que le programme complet et l'actualisation complète de la maison pourrait prendre autant de 20 millions de dollars. Et je pense que pour tout le monde surpris, le conseil a dit : "Eh bien, pourquoi ne pas aller pour le 20 ?" Je pense que le conseil a aussi entendu le message à ce moment-là que nous n'étions pas concentrés sur sa utilité et que nous devions nous concentrer et d'accorder sur sa utilité afin de vraiment être de l'utilisation d'un point de vue politique, que nous devions donner des conseils politiques sur ce que les utilisations seraient. Et je pense que nous étions soudainement et heureusement d'accord que nous parlions d'arts, studio et espace de performance. Nous parlons d'un écosystème non-profit, les rentes basse pour les non-profits qui ne peuvent pas opérer dans la ville. Et nous avons aussi eu un compromis entre deux côtés. L'autre côté qui est venu à la table parlait de STEAM. Et si vous n'êtes pas familier avec Science, Technologie, Engineering, Art, Math, ce que je veux vraiment dire quand je dis STEAM est de la formation hands-on, passionnante et entrepreneuriale avec une sorte de compétence de travail ou de formation. Donc ces trois utilisations ont évidemment une grande overlap dans la ville de Cambridge et tous trois sont sous ressources, sous leverage, surtout dans une ville qui a la technologie aussi élevée que nous et surtout dans une communauté qui a été bousculée par le développement comme l'a été l'Est de Cambridge. Ce qui est arrivé ensuite, et nous sommes presque terminés ici avec l'intro, est que la ville a été dit par un consultant que 4 millions de dollars pour l'appropriation pour faire que la maison soit conforme et jusqu'à la code sera suffisant pour commencer avec n'importe quel bidet. Un bidet peut prendre ça comme un début et pourrait toujours atteindre une sorte de majorité de l'espace communautaire même avec cette difficile position de départ. Ils ne devraient pas avoir le 20, 4 serait bon, CRA, autorité de développement de Cambridge, nos partenaires pourraient peut-être même doubler ou ajouter à cette quantité en faisant des grâces, pour défraiser le grand coût de la construction et d'exploiter plus de 50 ou 100 ans de prêt. Et puis nous sommes allés au processus d'un demandement de qualifications et de propositions et d'un groupe d'advisance que le gérant de la ville a nommé. Et je dois dire que je suis très apprécié du groupe d'advisance et j'espère que le groupe d'advisance n'a pas pris mon message, un appel pour nous rencontrer urgentement sur le résultat ici comme un affrontement à leur travail. J'ai parlé avec un membre d'advisance aujourd'hui et j'espère que nous sommes sur la même page quand je dis que mon plan autour de plus de ressources et de plus de choses est possible. Je ne pense pas que quelqu'un ne s'y soucie. Je ne pense pas que je ne sois d'accord avec ça. Je veux que le travail du groupe d'advisance et leur approbation sur ce résultat soit honoré, mais en même temps, je pense que personne ne dit que nous ne pouvons pas faire plus. Nous pouvons parler de cela plus et j'espère rencontrer le groupe d'advisance ou quelqu'un d'autre plus tard. À ce moment-là, nous avons reçu quatre ou plus d'applicants, beaucoup d'applicants ont quitté, beaucoup d'applicants n'ont pas appliqué et ont plainté de moi et d'autres conseillers. C'est à cause des contraintes. Je pense qu'ils ont trouvé que les contraintes financières étaient très difficiles. Reçu un applicant, c'est pour moi un hallmark que un processus a trop de contraintes ou pas assez d'ouverture. Dans ce cas, je pense que c'est le premier. Et en reçu une soumission, je ne pense pas que cela les désqualifie. Je ne pense pas que cela parle d'une sorte de manque de vision, de manque de compétition. Les propositions sont brillantes. Elles sont brillantes d'un point de vue architectural et je veux voir plus d'un nombre d'autres points de vue que je ne pense pas ont pris la thèse originale du conseil et ont pris assez loin. Mais en effet, les contraintes ont été un défi et je pense qu'ils sont un défi pour ce groupe et ils sont un défi pour tout groupe. Enfin, et nous verrons plus de cela quand je viendrai à mes commentaires et j'espère que mes collègues ont quelques commentaires aussi. Le conseil n'a pas été pris en charge pour le rideau. Le conseil était extrêmement nerveux que cela ne soit pas suffisant de ressources. Le conseil était inquiet que cela ne réussisse pas ces fins difficiles. L'idée de l'espace d'art réel, de l'espace communautaire réel, de la permeabilité avec la communauté et une activation pour les familles et les quartiers de faible status socio-économique. C'est du truc difficile à faire. Ce n'est pas juste de faire le bâtiment parfait et comme Jesse l'a dit dans sa présentation, il a correctement dit : "Ce n'est pas si vous construisez, ils viendront". Mais je pense que beaucoup de gens au conseil étaient inquiets que si vous ne mettez plus de ressources derrière ça, ce difficile travail pourrait ne pas être fait en profondément, pourrait ne pas être planifié bien en avance. Je pense que le fait que le conseil n'a pas été pris en charge pour ce processus était franchement un choc pour tout le monde au conseil et que ça a fini sans avoir... Ouais, nous sommes arrivés à ce point, pas fini, sans avoir attaqué nos questions et nos mandats d'abord, sans avoir fait ça d'abord, est probablement quelque chose qui doit être discuté aujourd'hui et est un type de conflit difficile ou un type de défi à surmonter après neuf mois de travail. Avec ça, je vais laisser le reste de mes commentaires. Je pense que j'ai pris un peu à l'heure actuelle et je vais demander à tout le monde qui s'est inscrit pour le commentaire public de continuer à inscrire sur la feuille. Dan, si vous pouvez me passer ça, je prendrai les cinq premiers avant de passer à la présentation. Je ne peux pas lire le premier, mais puis-je dire Mme Bella ? Oui, et quand vous commencez votre commentaire public, dites votre nom et adresse pour le record.
Bonjour, mon nom est Michael Shaya, à la 19e avenue de Cambridge. Je suis représentant de l'asile artisanal à Somerville et j'aime le fait que nous parlions de l'art et l'art communautaire parce que ce sont trois choses qui sont les pilotes de l'asile artisanal à Somerville. Je suis le nouveau directeur de la comité et nous sommes maintenant en train de chercher un nouveau lieu pour déplacer ça. Et je voudrais certainement avoir ce lieu déplacé à ma ville de base et il semble embodyer toutes les choses que vous avez parlé plus tôt, vous savez, sur l'art, la communauté et l'art. Donc, nous attendons un nouveau lieu pour vivre. J'espère que nous pouvons nous adhérer à vos plans.
Merci. Je pense que vous verrez dans la présentation qu'il y a un composant de l'espace créateur et... Désolé, je ne cherche pas à engager.
Oui, il y a des espaces créateurs et il y a des espaces créateurs et nous sommes très différents parce qu'une des choses que nous avons trouvées dans notre espace qui l'a fait vraiment unique est que je dirais que environ 50% de nos membres sont artistes et cela apporte un niveau nouveau de créativité et d'excitation que vous ne voyez pas dans un magasin de tech ou juste un espace créateur standard. Et donc je pense que c'est en alignant avec ce que vous avez parlé plus tôt, avec l'avoir communautaire, arts et STEAM.
Le site web a des barres colorées maintenant ?
Oui.
Elon Levy ?
D'abord, je suis... Je suis arrivé, je pense, au processus de la equation de la fondation qui a commencé ce processus. Je pense qu'il y a quelques années, notre gérant de la ville actuelle, excusez-moi, M. Pasquale a fait une présentation où il a dit que une banque de 20 millions de dollars pour la renovation de la maison ne va pas être remarquée, va être remarquée par le contributeur. Nous avons poussé assez dur à avoir un bâtiment communautaire. Il y a cinq ans que le bâtiment est dans les mains de la ville et nous stillons. Je pense que c'est assez incroyable que dans une ville avec notre type de ressources, il nous prend cinq ans pour aller d'un bâtiment vide à quelque chose qui ressemble à quelque chose. Et maintenant, il ne ressemble à rien. Aucune des objectifs qui ont été fixés dans l'équation de la fondation ou dans les réunions qui ont été créées, qui ont été menées par la CRA ne vient pas près de ce que nous avons comme résultat. Le fait que nous ayons un seul prépondent qui a répondu au RFP est en fait un peu, encore une fois, vraiment surprenant que vous n'ayez pas pu obtenir un large range de propositions pour ce bâtiment. Je sais que beaucoup de gens sont intéressés. Je sais que nous, en tant que ville, aurions pu faire les choses nécessaires pour aider n'importe quelle organisation qui aurait apporté quelque chose que nous recherchions, qui était de l'art, c'était l'art, c'était l'engagement de la communauté et ne pas faire que ce bâtiment soit une autre partie de Kendall Square. Je voudrais également souligner le fait que le comité qui a été créé s'appelle le Comité de la Maison de Kendall quand c'est clairement un bâtiment d'Est de Cambridge et je veux réclamer ce bâtiment à l'Est de Cambridge parce que c'est exactement ce qu'il est. C'est la communauté d'Est de Cambridge qui a fait le building et c'est la communauté d'Est de Cambridge qui devrait avoir au début les 10 000 pieds carrés requis. Donc, ne prenons pas ça et le mettons déjà dans Kendall Square. Nous nous assurons que nous le gardons où il appartient et c'est avec l'Est de Cambridge et que nous réussissions l'objectif que nous avons fixé, qui est d'avoir un bâtiment d'art, de STEAM et un endroit où nous pouvons explorer les futures opportunités d'éducation et d'advers pour notre communauté. Merci.
Merci. Et je devrais dire ici que la norme pour le commentaire public est de parler à la fin après la présentation pour que vous puissiez réfléchir au contenu de la réunion. Cette section de commentaires publics plus tôt, qui ne pourra plus être maintenue pendant quelques minutes, est juste pour ceux qui ont des conflits plus tard dans la réunion et vraiment veulent participer. Donc si je vous appelle votre nom et que vous n'en avez pas besoin, il y aura plus de temps vers la fin et nous reviendrons sur vous à ce moment-là. Phyllis Brethall ?
Phyllis Brethall, 65 Antrim Street. Merci conseiller Mazin et conseillers de la ville pour cette opportunité de vous adresser. Je vais répéter, je sais que certains de ce qui a déjà été dit, mais je pense qu'il n'y a probablement pas de façon de nous éviter de le répéter et que ça ne peut être répété trop de fois. Dans une ville qui a des ressources, je suis vraiment excitée par les possibilités que l'espace communautaire pourrait offrir et particulièrement aux quelques groupes dont je suis concernée sont les artistes, artistes visuels et artistes de performance et les groupes communautaires. Right now, when artists want to display their work, to begin with, there isn't enough space, affordable space, and that's becoming more and more difficult as city rents go higher, as space is being accumulated by developers. So to find affordable space for artists to work other than in their garages or their basements or their bedrooms is very, very difficult. And then to find a place to show their art, as I'm sure Jason Weeks can attest when he's trying to organize these wonderful opportunities for artists to display their work, they have to open their homes in order to display their artwork. This is ridiculous in a city that has the kind of resources that we have. And for performing artists, there is virtually nothing except spaces that people would have to pay for. In addition, there is very little space for community meetings. Right now, I belong to a number of groups who scramble. These are community groups that scramble for places to meet, either we're meeting in people's homes, which limits the size of the meeting group, or we have to pay, as the group has a larger meeting, we have to pay to have access to a meeting space that a larger group can attend. So I very much appreciate this extraordinary opportunity to take the foundation building and really grab hold of the richness that it offers to us and think of it as creatively and as openly as possible. And I really appreciate the opportunity to both speak about it and to have all of you here to speak in hopefully support of more community space. Merci beaucoup.
Merci, Phyllis. Lee Ferris ?
Lee Ferris, 269 Norfolk Street. Pour moi, le fait que nous ayons seulement un application est indicative du problème et je suis d'accord avec le conseiller Mazin que ça signifie probablement que les contraintes sont trop grandes. Et probablement les contraintes ont à voir avec les plusieurs utilisations que nous voulons de l'espace et l'insuffisant argent que Cambridge a engagé. Donc un développeur doit penser à comment ils peuvent mettre en œuvre des utilisations qui vont se fonder le bâtiment. Et je ne pense pas que c'est réaliste pour nous de penser que le bâtiment soit capable de faire des utilisations commerciales, de complètement financer le bâtiment de la manière que nous voulons qu'il soit, avec l'art et ainsi de suite. Donc je pense qu'il doit y avoir quelque chose et j'espère que la discussion ce soir va essayer de trouver quel est ce quelque chose. Mon hypothèse est que c'est l'argent et oui, les gens peuvent s'appliquer pour des grâces, mais il est difficile d'obtenir des grâces à cette étape, donc vous ne pouvez pas être sûr que vous allez obtenir les grâces. Enfin, je dirais que nous avons beaucoup d'espaces de collaboration, soit dans Kendall Square, soit en ligne. Donc je pense simplement que les espaces de collaboration ne sont pas ce que nous avons besoin. Je ne pense pas que simplement les espaces de collaboration nous amèneront où nous voulons aller avec l'espace communautaire, l'espace d'art, l'espace d'éducation. Donc je remercie le travail que les gens ont mis dans ça, mais je ne pense pas que cette proposition qui est devant nous nous amène où nous voulons aller. Merci.
Merci. Hassan Rashid ?
Ok, paix, paix et saineté, bienvenue à vous tous. Hello, everybody. I'm Hassan Rashid, alongside 820 Massachusetts Avenue. Some of you here this evening may remember my public comment on May 7, 2015, when I went out on a statement that our municipal policymakers and others from the affluent citizenry of Cambridge were trampling on the rights of local homeless sector, of the local homeless sector, and were saying, denying the conversion of the foundation building for and into poverty housing initiatives and priorities directed towards ending homelessness. From day one, the city manager's office, the community development department and the city council had been a violation of federal, state mandates when it comes to the foundation building, the annual federalized air consolidation plan, title five mandates, the other state acts, and now also Fair Housing and affirmative, furthering Fair Housing Act and amendments, violations are to be included, also including the incredibility of the keenest reading government agency when they were held and are still withholding the truth of issues from the public then and now for months. This evening, the debacle by ASO concerning the white elephant foundation building continues in that the art initiatives are continuing to be falsely paramount themselves above poverty initiatives to the extent of exclusion of poor people's government mandated rights to have housing created for them. If God is willing, at the foundation building today, today's hearing on the foundation building is another series of barriers erected to keep the homeless out of Kendall Square and other high-income areas here in Cambridge, Massachusetts, for no other reason than for greed and master interests. The Black Lives Matter movement got a right when they coined it housing discrimination. Therefore, all allotment and expenditures of public and taxpayers' funds to enhance the artistic element of Cambridge and the expense of depriving the poor and homelessness of an affordable housing atmosphere of gravity is a waste of public money, these monnaies, and a description for disaster. Finally, this event will literally represent and go down in history as a violation of federal, state, local tenure plans to end homelessness, master planning, poverty housing strategies, and the public trust and the community development department's obligation to comply with federal, state, and local mandates concerning homelessness. Merci.
Merci. Et pour tous ceux qui ont des préparations, Hassan, si vous avez des préparations, le procureur les prendra et vous pouvez simplement les laisser sur le podium et nous les rassemblerons en groupes. Si quelqu'un a déjà parlé et a une préparation, vous pouvez la laisser là et nous la rendrons sur le record. Avant de conclure et de passer à autre chose, est-ce qu'il y a quelqu'un d'autre qui a vraiment besoin de faire leur commentaire public dans la première tranche maintenant ? Ok, avec ça, je vais juste dire Heather Hoffman sera la dernière dans la session. Vous voulez ou vous voulez attendre ?
Oui.
Ok, super. Allons vers la présentation, autorité de développement de Cambridge et Kendall Square comme partenaires de développement. Nous allons passer une présentation entre 30 et 45 minutes.
Oui, ça sonne bien. Mon nom est Lisa Peterson, je suis l'actrice gératrice de la ville et merci à tous ceux qui ont présenté ici aujourd'hui. Je vais commencer... Non, je veux dire que depuis les commentaires que nous avons entendus jusqu'à présent, je pense que nous partageons le désir de ce bâtiment pour être un facility communautaire vraiment important. Donc c'est le leadership et tout d'abord et surtout un objectif vraiment important pour tous. Je vais commencer par fournir un peu de contexte et de background à nos efforts pour développer la maison. Tom Evans, qui est l'exécutif directeur de l'autorité de développement de Cambridge, nous parlerons un peu plus du processus, fournir un update sur où nous sommes avec le processus et les prochaines étapes. Et puis nous verrons aussi de la CIC Graffiti, qui est le équipe de développement qui a été sélectionnée tendamment pour développer la maison de la fondation. Et puis nous serons contents de répondre aux questions et de entendre plus de gens après. Donc en termes de... Je veux revenir en mars 2014 où le conseil municipal a passé une loi sur laquelle il appelait 6 millions de dollars de fonds de la ville pour les improvements de la maison à la fondation, demandant à nous d'engager les parties prenantes dans un processus communautaire pour développer les objectifs, les options de programmation, les stratégies de gestion, la gouvernance et les stratégies financières. Demandant à nous d'établir un processus de collaboration avec la CRA, développer une stratégie cost effective pour développer la maison et de maintenir un haut degré de flexibilité et de contrôle pour la ville. Donc je pense que comme certains ont déjà parlé, il y a vraiment un processus communautaire extensif qui a suivi qui nous a aidés à définir la vision, les objectifs de la maison, les utilisations acceptables pour la fondation. Et vous savez, je ne vais pas les détailler en détail, mais il y a vraiment, vraiment une définition importante pour nous de la mettre en place et de regarder à l'arrière. Et je veux dire que ces visions et objectifs et utilisations de ce qui a été inclus dans le plan de démonstration que la CRA a présenté au conseil qui a été adopté comme partie du plan de démonstration, il a été inclus dans le RFP qui est sorti pour le développeur et est disponible sur notre site web aussi. Mais vous savez, un morceau clé de l'objectif de ce bâtiment est vraiment... Un morceau clé est sur le programme innovateur et la foster de la sensibilité de créativité et d'innovation par le compartiment des espaces populés avec des utilisations complémentaires. Créer des mentors, des internat, d'apprentissage, des formations de l'armée, des programmes éducatifs pour les résidents qui peuvent bénéficier directement et engager la communauté entourée, incluant des opportunités de formation significatives dans les domaines d'art qui peuvent effectivement introduire et préparer les résidents de la ville existant et croissant dans les domaines professionnels qui ont été fusionnés à Kendall Square au cours des derniers années et capitaliser sur le succès commercial de la redevelopment de Kendall Square pour créer un environnement collaboratif unique comme un ressource citywide avec un mix divers de culture, d'éducation, de utilisation commerciale, éthiquant la jeunesse et l'engagement de la scène avec un focus particulier sur les households sous représentés et de la classe inférieure. Il y a un nombre d'autres objectifs que je ne vais pas parcourir tous, qui ont à voir avec l'opération et la structure financière, la construction et le développement de sites. Et il y a aussi une section sur ce qui est considéré comme utilisations viables, avec aussi une sorte d'utilisations programmatiques acceptables et d'utilisations d'espace qui ont été listées. Et il y a un nombre d'entre eux que nous avons passé beaucoup de temps à parler. La stratégie de développement pour la maison implique la ville entrant dans un accord de prêt long terme avec la CRA et puis la CRA en émettant un RFP pour entrer dans une sub-lease avec une entité de développement pour développer et opérer la maison selon la vision et les objectifs créés par la communauté. Donc nous sommes maintenant à la pointe où Paul... Tom va entrer dans plus de détails. Vous savez, nous n'avons même pas commencé à entrer, à négocier une sub-lease et c'est la substance de la prochaine phase. Un comité d'advisance de la fondation a également été formé pour examiner les potentielles utilisations, programmes et activités qui se déroulent dans la maison pendant la plupart de 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 la We share many of the concerns expressed by councilors as well as some members of the public. We expect that those and other issues will be addressed, negotiated, and written as part of the sublease process with the CRA. Some of the issues that have been articulated in the recommendation to the city manager, which was submitted to the council, included things like the need for further discussion to ensure that the Foundry is a citywide resource, greater commitment to universal design and green features, better integration between activities on upper two floors and the rest of the building, further discussion regarding the percentages of various uses, types of space, types of day, outreach plans, and reporting mechanisms, engaging the Foundry Advisory Committee and the CRA in overseeing the use of the community space, establishing a realistic schedule for each type of space for community and other uses, and incentives and penalties related to community use, commitments to benefit surrounding community Cambridge residents through the economic development and training opportunities, especially for underrepresented and low-income residents, commitments for programming that targets the full diversity of Cambridge, further discussion on the affordability of discounted space for community use and operating hours to which public access is maintained, and building relationships and marketing to attract community use and non-technical users. The team was tentatively selected based on criteria that was very carefully created and clearly laid out in the RFP process. We do believe we have the, they have the capacity and experience to be able to successfully execute the project in a way that meets the vision and objectives that have been laid out. And I just want to assure we'll continue to work with the CRA to ensure that our vision is met, and I am going to hand it over to Tom to talk in more depth about the process and next steps.
Thank you, Lisa. Through the council, thank you again for this opportunity to discuss the process and where we are, and we're sort of in a cusp between processes as Lisa was referring to. And there's been a lot said, I don't want to repeat everything, but I do want to add a few elements of key points in our selection process and the community process before that and what we see looking forward. So, the demonstration plan actually set up a two-stage procurement process, which was referred earlier, to first have an RFQ to seek ideas and interest from the development community. And we received six applicants at that time, we went through them, qualified five, one dropped out, so we had to continue the process with four. There's something else that happened in that RFQ process, which is we looked at the responses that had come in from the, which were very disciplined proposals, and we looked to see how we need to reemphasize what were the goals and objectives that were stated in the demonstration plan. And I wanted continuously to talk about how we've gone back to that as a touch point for every stage of the process. So we began with a vision which Lisa described that had a lot of focus on innovation center and creativity and shared use of space and making sure that it's open, feels like a community resource for all of Cambridge, and is also financially self-sufficient, so it's not something that required continuous appropriation, but something that could really live with its own life and vibrancy. So, and so when we got the RFQ results back, one of the things we said is we need to make sure we reemphasize those once again in the process. And so that as we crafted the RFP, we restated those, and we then designed the selection process and the evaluation criteria around those criteria, which is sort of the memo that you have from the advisory committee continued to reach back to those key criteria. In, earlier in the summer, we received one submission from the Foundry Development Partners, which includes CIC and Graffiti, and this was after extensive process through the RFP process, which we extended the timeline just to try to ensure participation, because we'd heard from a couple of the participants that they had various issues that needed more time to resolve. So then in, over the summer, we went through the process of evaluating the proposal, and we continued to evaluate the proposal as by the same criteria that we set out as if we'd had competing proposals. And it was at this, at this point in the process, we really started meeting with high frequency with the Foundry Advisory Committee. I meant to note earlier that they actually entered into the process when we were writing the RFP to make sure that we were continuing to reflect the touchpoints of which they were assigned to serve the guardians of through the process. They actually also reviewed the RFQ submissions, seminals. So, they've been working with us hand in hand throughout the process. And then when it came to evaluating the proposals, they provided a lot of very helpful feedback to us in the, in the process, a lot of suggestions of which Lisa started to address right there of things that we need to continue to reflect on as we work towards negotiation. And then I think one of the key things that the advisory committee spoke to and as advice that we will take up is this idea that we need to proactively plan for how space is programmed and planned for the community, have very consistent report packs on how that space is used, and we feel like they're a role essential to that constant reevaluation. So the concept that the advisory committee is not something to get us just through the procurement process, but to be stewards with us and the administration to make sure the vision of the project is maintained throughout. So in the, in August, the CRA board tentatively designated the Foundry Development Partners, subject to, one, the approval of the city manager, but most importantly, subject to negotiation to make sure that we could get the project that we want. And I think that it's very key that at this point in time with that selection, we have tentatively designated a partnership, a team that we believe can work to deliver a development project and a program working collaboratively with the city, with the city council, with community partners, and with the Foundry Advisory Committee to build a program that works for the building and works for the community. And that's, so that's where we are right now, is we have a partner that we need to enter into discussions with to look at the design of the building, the program of the building, and the financial considerations of that process. There are many points that are still open to discussion that Lisa Peterson walked through, and it should be very clear that this is, that we don't take those issues lightly as far as making sure that the building operates with transparency and openness to the community as much as possible, that we have need to evaluate the process throughout, that we look to make sure the finances work as we imagined them in the development, I mean sort of the demonstration project. And we continue to go back to the vision and objectives of the project as our touchstone. And I can't emphasize that enough because we need to work from that, which is part of the demonstration project, part of the disposition process from City Council, that that was our guidepost. So, before passing it on to CIC and Graffiti and talk a little bit more specifically about what their proposal is, just I want to go back to before we had the demonstration project and when we first, as the CRA, entered into the discussion, our first community process on this involved a community workshop that was held in June of 2014 whereby we participated in an activity, sure, to try to explore what the right balance of uses would be in the project. And in the report back here, there was, many of you were there, and we had an exercise of Legos to sort of talk about all the various, I mean, from the people who've spoken already and people probably speak in the future, there are a lot of ideas of what to do with this building. And we wanted to sort of see, well, what ideas came up as priorities? And one of the things that Catherine Madden, who helped organize the workshop, said is right from the beginning, people broke the rules of the activity that we had set out, which is they started taking the uses and piling them on top of each other. And so we ended up with these 3D Lego sculptures of overlapping education, office, workforce development, arts, industry, in people's ideas of how the project should unfold. And so we actually really took that message as one of the take homes of that process was we want to look at a mix of uses, we want to look at a mix of uses that are overlapping with each other in space within the building that we weren't carving up into a bunch of segregated uses. And so we really carried that through in writing the demonstration project and the RFQ and the RFP, and will continue to carry that through in the negotiations. And I think that's a key handoff point to let the team describe how they look to bring about those community uses and that overlapping uses space.
Thanks, Paul. How about 20-minute presentation from CIC Graffiti? Or do we have, sure, 20 minutes? A lot of people in public comment.
Thank you, Councilor. I'm Brian Daisy from CIC, and we're actually planning on a short presentation. We wanted to be as responsive as we could tonight, and we felt this discussion could go in a variety of ways, so it seemed better to keep it breathing. We're very excited about what we propose, what we heard from comments tonight, many of them are things we can absolutely incorporate into the final program, really early in the process. So we think there's quite a bit we can do. The concept relies on shared space, and the idea is we're going to get all sorts of uses in a variety of spaces, in a variety of times of day, and get multiple uses of those spaces, and through that energize the building, get more uses, get more activity. We recognize there can be a debate about how much, and there is a debate about how much can really happen, how much can we dedicate to certain uses. We have this experience, we run buildings and spaces, we're dealing with how do you share space, how do you do it in an equitable way, how do you do it in a community-friendly way, how do you build communities? We build communities within our spaces, as many of you know. So we believe we can do that very well here. We understand there's a discussion about sort of the volume of what we can do and we can string. And what we tried to do is put together the best proposal with the parameters we were given, we think we did that. We're, as I said, excited about what we feel could be done. We're going to focus a little bit on the shared space because I think that's where there's a lot of questions about how does that really work and can you get a variety of uses that people would like to see? So with that, I want to turn it over to Jesse Beatty for a few comments, and then we've got a couple of slides here.
So I think I would add, Brian said we're excited about this project, I think it's also appropriate to express that we're excited about the conversation so far that's happened tonight. And we've always viewed this, and kind of even going back to the start of the process, trying to figure out what is the best use for the Foundry, we've been involved in this conversation before we became submitted to the RFP, and really quite frankly care about City Cambridge, many of us live in Cambridge, and care about this part of Cambridge, we care about how we get this, a true community asset. And I think to do that requires a level of conversation with you all, with the community, and a continuation of the conversation that we started with the CRA, with the advisory committee. And you know, we do feel very fortunate that in our eyes, we approached this process with some very clear criteria. We, at the same time, have tried to approach it with a level of creativity, open-mindedness to how do we accomplish many, many different goals, and how to stack the many uses and satisfying very important goals that the city and the community had. So, just quickly, you know, over the last 16 months, as we became very interested in this project, we really focused on three core things. You know, the first one was very much about how do we put forth a proposal that we collectively believe in, that we feel like meets the criteria that the council and the CRA articulated in the RFP and the RFQ. And at the same time, quite frankly, was a model for how building like this can be treated. And I think between the CIC and Graffiti teams, we spoke a lot about how do we create a model for public-private partnership with the Foundry. And part of that means an extensive amount of community dialogue, not just as we move forward with the negotiation with the CRA and hopefully get past that into development cycle, but also how we run, build, and operate the building. So that was kind of the first very lofty thing we focused on. The second was, of course, kind of winning the RFP. We always set out to do this to be selected because we believe in the project and we think we can pull it off. And the last one, which I'll spend a little bit more time talking about, is how in that pursuit to be designated, do we create the actual physical canvas, use the physical space, the primus of the building, to do all these things? And our real focus has been on the first two floors of the building. And you know, the ground floor, which we've, you know, and I'm sure many of you have seen renderings, and we spent a bunch of time with an architect that we feel really understands adaptive reuse, with some consultants who understand what it means to construct this project and develop it. The guiding principles have been a very, very porous, a very open, a very flexible, a very shared ground floor. We think that's really important, it's Cambridge, I think that's really important to Kendall Square, we think that's really important to the city. So, just kind of bringing you through the building quickly to kind of try to, if I can figure out, it's exciting to be back here. So I think it's significant, and we'll track a bit the comments that we are to date, but what's not shown here is actually the basement. I do want to speak a little bit of the basement. Our goal for the basement is to have a 12,000 square foot makerspace. And the gentleman who spoke earlier kind of said there's a makerspace, and there are makerspaces and then there are makerspaces. And I think that we've engaged Molly Dean's team, who teaches at Olin, who was previously, interestingly, the executive director of the Artisans Asylum, to kind of help us work through what is the model for the ground floor makerspace. We haven't decided on it, but we know a few things. We know that it's very important. We know the 12,000 square feet of space for this sort of use is going to have an impact in the community. In addition, physically, the way the project sets up, it can take very heavy live loads, it's got loading, it has the ability of housing shared resources that make makerspaces possible, where there can be fabricating, repair, manufacturing, prototyping. And you know, that's kind of the start of what our definition of makerspace would be. You know, I worked with Molly when I was on the board of the Artisans Asylum, we think she's kind of a national and international authority on this topic, and you know, we're really excited to talk more about it. So, moving to the ground floor, you know, if I could direct your attention to the Assembly Hall, that's actually an interesting part of the project because it's in the basement, but we created a double-height space. And part of the reason for creating a double-height space is to create a place within the Foundry that can host not just events but performance. We think this is one of the iterations of the design of the building, we advanced it between the RFQ and the RFP, which is a major improvement and very much was responsive to what we were hearing from the community. The other things we heard just in the first five comments tonight, which we spoke extensively with the city about the advisory committee, and we've heard from the preliminary round of community engagement we've done, is where a place of display are, where is there space for meetings, education space, training? We would add to this culinary entrepreneurship, small format makerspaces, you know, places actually that folks downstairs are making things, potentially sell their goods. And what we've done is created a canvas whereby there are a lot of different spaces that can be used in different ways. And one of the things we've heard from this team community, you know, which is evolving rapidly, and one of the things we've heard from nonprofits and community organizations is that their needs vary, their needs vary in terms of the duration, the frequency, and the actual use of the space. So we've tried to create a canvas for this building to be used by a host of different uses in various different ways. The only thing on this rendering or this plan that actually will be leased is the restaurant. We think a restaurant is an important component of creating kind of 18-hour-plus dynamic in the building. You know, we went a step further, we've created a kitchen that, you know, typically restaurants have a back-up house, it's about a third of the square feet of the restaurant. Here we've created a back of the house that is the exact same size as the restaurant. The thought that went into that is that we don't want this just to be production space for the restaurant, but we want this to be spaces, you know, a space where we can do trainings around food. Culturally, we think food is something that unites folks, and you know, we have a partner identified for somebody to kind of help us put further definition as we move through the process with the CRA and terms of what that would mean. So, you know, there's been some talk about, not nowhere it came from, but I do want to respond to, about us only having 2,000 square feet of community benefit space. When you combine the 20,000 square feet of space, when you take out the restaurant space, we have approximately 20,000 square feet of space here on the ground floor, 12,000 square feet of space in the basement, which we view as being dynamic, flexible, shareable space. And you know, we think this is part of how we And, you know, we think this is part of how we satisfy the goals of the community. We feel strongly about that. And, you know, one of the things we did, for better or wrong, and we stand by and we believe it, is that designating X number of square feet, 15,000, 20,000, 10,000, just saying this exact space in a very prescriptive way is what we're going to use for community benefit space, didn't seem like a scenario that created a dynamic building that certainly will evolve over time. So that's kind of our overall philosophy to the way that we've approached the design challenges, the programmatic challenges, and kind of are just starting to think about the community process ahead. So Ryan, I don't know if you want to add anything else to that?
I just added a couple of comments, and Jesse touched on this. Certainly, as we said in our proposal, envision a wide variety of uses from arts, science, education, civic, social uses. What we've seen in the buildings and the spaces we're involved in, there's a way to create a ballet, a little monster, all these uses, to create a dynamic environment. As Jesse said, we envision this as a building that's in use up to 18 hours a day. If this isn't considered a premier civic gathering place in a model for other cities, we'll feel we've failed. We got interested in this because of exactly this mix of uses. That's where the real challenge and excitement is, to bring together various elements of the Cambridge, East Cambridge community, and get the right mix in this building and make it a vibrant place for people to meet and gather and interact and engage in these programs. So as we said at the beginning, given the parameters of the RFP, we think we can create a very successful and vibrant building with these shared uses, with the benefits of the community organizations. There's a lot more detail behind this in the shared spaces. We're also, in our RFP, we're talking about providing free space and discounted space as part of that. But as everyone said, we're early in the process. There's still a lot more work to do to really refine this, balance all these issues, and come up with the final program. So with that, I think we're happy to answer questions.
Thank you. Thanks to the city, thanks to the city, and thanks, of course, to CIC, RFE, Valley Development, and the Square County Development Commission. With that, I think it's probably best to go back to public comment and hear more from the council on the business discussion.
Do you have a question before we have a comment?
Pardon?
Do you have a question before we have a comment?
Yeah, if you ask questions, I'll take them down, and you can hope to relay them. You can't really engage in a conversation from the public comment, but we'll begin. You can save them in public comment, or you can pass them up to me, and we'll start from the beginning. Sure, either way. So, I'm doing it with the counselors or city administrators, I think we're good and we'll have more time.
Is that the only bracket that we do that our basement, and I think there's a center of what, third floor?
Yeah, so there aren't four floors of the building. We brought other imagery, which we're happy to walk you through as questions certainly come up. We can do that now. We also, you know, felt like this was the appropriate time to kind of give an overview in terms of what our approach was to the building. We did a pretty robust presentation over the summer. We've kind of got our few responses available in public. And we're happy to come back at a later date and do a far more detailed presentation in terms of, you know, the entire building, our qualifications, all of that.
Mr. Chair, I would ask the same thing. If you just could just, if there's the basement, you have the floor plan for that, that'd be good to see it. And if this is the first floor, the ground floor, and there's four floors, if you could just give us an idea, it'd be helpful. Thank you.
This is just my view of the ground floor. So we're calling the, there's a basement, there's a ground floor, there's a second, and there's a third floor. So you can see the variety of different sized spaces as you actually looking through the colony?
This is the basement, and you can see, you know, the 12,000 square feet, approximately makerspace. There are certain challenges with the building. One of the things we did, and we don't want to make this too much about design, but is looked at how we can reorganize the core of the building and actually have loading receiving at the basement. You know, one of the challenges of finding appropriate makerspaces oftentimes is loading. It's where you bring in machinery, where you move out larger items. But, you know, it's kind of a central common element of the building. And the Assembly Hall is actually, that spans two floors, basement and first floor.
So as Dave goes through these slides, we can comment on some of these different areas. The Assembly Hall, the idea is it's a two-story Assembly Hall that can actually also be a theater, do musical performances, a mezzanine, as well as the base space. This would be used for those uses. It could be used for public events, it could be used as an Assembly Hall, auditorium style. This would be a very flexible space. It's about, is it 4500? So that can really handle, you know, a pretty substantial number of people, 500, according to what.
Mr. Chair, through you, just a quick question. So is that, can you go back? Is that like a black box theater?
It would be as flexible as you could make it without it being exactly a black box theater. So it could be used with the other uses as well.
Yeah, and one of the things we need to work out with the community is that there are a lot of different uses you can imagine going in a black box theater, but requirements for a dance company versus other performance art versus music is very different. So we tried to think about how we provide a space that can host these things, recognizing, of course, it's been a lot of our conversation, that those users have very different needs. But that's kind of the goal of that space. Thank you.
Before we continue, ask our fellow members something.
Just a, excuse me, a quick question. These are really diagrams of general areas. I take it and think like table storage, which is going to be huge, moving tables around, moving, taking out equipment, they would be incorporated into the diagram along the walls or?
You can actually see cops here already, so I have provisions for storage.
No, they don't say.
No, it's the entire, the entire region. See that whole storage is actually the substantial area, and that was one of the uses that really made a lot of sense, because it was about space to get shorter tables, to know that things are on site.
Just to the speaker, can you speak in your mic all the time?
Yeah, last time I didn't do that.
Thank you. Mr. Chair, do you two present this? So the commercial kitchen, is a commercial kitchen that anyone from the community could use? Or is it a commercial kitchen for the restaurant?
So the idea is how do we create the kitchen as a shared resource? We're going to have to work through certain issues with the Health Department and that is right? We've got some experience with that. But the idea is that, as I said previously, you know, this is not just about servicing the restaurant. You know, we feel like, and we've been engaged in a bunch of conversations with potential operators, the other part of this is finding those operators to partner with us to do this. And that's a pursuit at this early stage that we've had some conversations, but once we get through this, we'll negotiate with the CRA, that's when we go out and we kind of find those partners. But very much so, we view, and the reason we put commercial kitchen as opposed to backup house for restaurant, is that there will be some component open to the public, and we'll find somebody to operate a shared kitchen where we can do training, we can do traditional education, things like that. Yeah, and I think part of that is, I mean, these are things that culturally unite, you know, we see some of this programming as stuff that is particularly good for young people and families in Cambridge. You know, one of the conversations we had with the community in our last public meeting was, we're going to need all of our help, kind of reaching out and making sure, tapping in to the entire city. And that's the collaborative kind of nature of what we want to do throughout the building. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
So we've got these slightly out of order again because we were sort of directed towards a certain, we wanted to make sure we discussed the shared spaces. This looks at the left-hand side, which you saw before, which is the plan, the Exxon Plan of the first floor, which is the most public of the floors. Then if you look on the right-hand side, the view from Ben Street, so you're looking south, you see the two-story assembly space on the first floor. To the left, the colony that runs from Ben to Roger Street, that really creates this open passageway through the building. You see the community pod, which is a 700-square-foot piece of the building that is meant to jet out a bit because it was meant to be prominent, and that is considered to be exclusively for community use, could be community organization needs, a whole variety of uses. And then shows the third floor, which is the CIC space, or the fourth floor, which is also the CIC space. So really, it's the same, second and third, the building is organized. And again, looking at the view from Ben Street, when you look at the view from Roger Street, you see the makerspace that's on the same wall as the assembly space, the shared kitchen and restaurant, Jesse just addressed, and then the two floors, where is the shared office and co-working space that CIC would operate.
That's a much more complete picture. I think there were also some financials in there, a couple of slides back. Can we just take a quick look at those as well?
Sure. So this is just a quick overview of the total investment required, which in total is $36 million, the City of Cambridge, and the CRA contributed, or putting in $750,000, some of that, it was $8 million, some of which has been spent. We would then need to finance the rest. We would seek to raise $14 million in equity for the project and another $14 million in debt. That would comprise the total sources for the $36 million.
And I don't know if you're discussing your performance with us or with them, but what's the return you're promising your investors?
Basically, we're looking for about a nine or 10% return on the equity.
My understanding is that if people don't get the equity that they're looking for, you won't get the money equity.
Well, if people don't get the return, I think that's, if people can't get a return, they won't invest. If they don't invest, you can't raise the money you need to raise, correct?
So I think for me, this is the heart of the whole discussion. I have no idea what use works best. Don't look for me to help design the building. But if moving those numbers around allows us to change the use in a way that makes it a better public use, then that's what I would like to do. And I don't know if that's possible, not from a finance standpoint, but from making the building work standpoint, because you guys are the expert in that. This is the important part of the presentation here.
Okay, well, let's talk about it more. Let's talk about all those things more. I will encourage the public commenters to be super brief, one to three minutes, one if you can. We're getting a lot of the same messages, and I think they're really important messages. I just want to be able to discuss points like that and still have time to make it do so. Can I ask just one question? How long are the leases? The city gave the CRA a lease of 50 years, and then the sublease would be whatever portion of the 50 years is left after we finish.
Through the chair, it was designed to be a co-terminist lease, 50 years.
Yeah. Thank you. Heather Hoffman.
Hello, Heather Hoffman, 213 Hurley Street. And I can't agree more with what Counselor Kelly was saying, that this is supposed to be, the entire building is supposed to be a resource for the community. That's what the zoning says, that's what people worked for. And although it comes as shock to many people, I think that my neighbor and friend, Elon Levy, was not nearly vociferous enough. I think that, that $10,000, I cannot say this enough times, should be banished from your thoughts. That is not what this building is for. Do not talk about 10,000 square feet as some minimum. That's not what it is. And you shouldn't think about it that way. I want to say that I'm glad to see spaces that can be used for many different things. A couple of things that I didn't see mentioned, or if you're going to have performances, it's really nice to have rehearsal space, and it's really nice to have somewhere to build your sets and to store props and all of those things. Because, yes, you can do stuff that you could move in the trunk of a VW bug, but that's not what most performances are. So I hope that that's considered in this. And again, I hope that the city will come up with money so that this can be much more of the stuff you showed at the beginning and much less of the stuff you mentioned at the end. Thanks.
Thank you. Monica Rehm. That's all your questions.
Okay. My question is, it sounds like you are intending to manage the building. Like, obviously, they're flexible spaces. Someone has just signed up, who's going to be the performance space, who's going to use, right? And you're intending that for you to be you? Is that correct?
No, let's just talk about those after I'm taking some of them down, and I hope we can treat all of them together. So if you would just continue with other questions, we'll come back.
Oh, I'm not getting an answer to my question? I'm just?
I hope you will, because I think it's a good one. What I'm saying to you and to the other public commenters, let's get through all the questions, and we'll discuss not only?
Part of my comment has to do with whether or not that's what they're envisioning. I would like an answer right now.
I think you're getting a head nod, so let's just continue.
Okay, so I'm strongly against that, basically. I think that you should be creating a project that you then retire yourselves from. And we have community leaders making these decisions, people who know the community, who are rooted in it, and who manifest some of the diversity that Cambridge is actually about. And I'm very concerned about any project that requires you to manipulate it into far into the future.
Justin McIntosh.
Justin McIntosh, 154 Hurley Street. I've been a working artist, somewhere in Boston and Cambridge and other parts of the city. So I've got a brief, it's always been difficult for me to find studio space in Cambridge, also with, you know, people that I know like you. And it also seems like most of the people that I know who are artists are leaving the city, they're finding other places, they're finding other venues. A lot of our shows seem to be happening in Boston, in Joplin, Somerville. Seems one more. It seems one more traveling to those spaces, interact with the arts on a public level. I also want to make a brief statement also that I feel like, as an artist in the community, I don't want to pit in against community organizations, against affordable housing, that we are enemies fighting for the scraps of the city. So I don't want to be seeking to fight for space against affordable housing, against community organizations. We should be in that together. I don't know if this space can be used for housing. It seems like that's not on the table. I don't know if the zoning, anything. I haven't heard discussion about it here, but people said that they would like more affordable housing, you know, it's a issue in the city. Doesn't seem to be addressed in this plan, and I don't know what that's about. The last thing I want to say is that it seems like there is a standard for understanding how to create vibrant communities, vibrant arts, vibrant culture, and the way that you do that, I lived in New York City, I went to a bunch of meetings that were like, how do we regain what New York City had in the 60s and 70s, where this boom of arts made New York City famous? Because a lot of people were concerned that it was wrong. And it seemed like there was clear work that's been done on this, there's a clear consensus, you have to have anchors, you have to have places within a city where those people intermingle, where you have artists and organizers and poets and musicians who share the same spaces in the city. And one thing, just to address what I've seen with the proposal, it doesn't seem like there is permanent space in that building for artists or organizers, for STEM people, that it is their space, it is their building, there are permanent studios, permanent offices, so that those people have real ownership of that space and are intermingling in it to create a more vibrant, creative community for Cambridge.
Hi, Rosie Ann Kraus, 912th Street. This is easy, I said probably. I just want to thank everyone who's done so much work for this. One of my lack of qualities is patience, and I think this is taking way too long. I think people get caught up in, I mean, there's a lot of protocol, there are a lot of regulations, there are a lot of laws and regulations, and they have to be addressed and teased across and blah, blah, blah. Meanwhile, there's this building that's sitting in East Cambridge, there are people who need it, who could use it, whose energy could transform it, and I would suggest to get it safe, usable, secured, let people in it, get it going while you're working on the plans, while you're coming up with all the protocol and all of the evaluations and all the who's going to make the decisions and what are the hours going to be, get people in so they get used to going there, because people go other places. People, artists, find places for their art, they'll find places to meet, to rehearse, get them in there, get them having a sense of neighborhood, of ownership, and work on the details as this is the process, and also make discoveries about the space that won't occur to people sitting at meetings, hypothesizing, and coming to meetings. So get a little impatient, get some people in there, you need to have the pathways there for the people, East Cambridge, people who might want to come where are further places. I did want to talk a little bit about anchors and people who could be there in terms of mentors and guiding lights, that too will happen. But the other thing is to just imagine when you're talking about the overlapping energies, that you look at a neighborhood, you say, oh, I know Central Square. Well, Central Square in the morning is one beast, Central Square in the afternoon is a completely other place, Central Square at night is a completely different neighborhood, it's a completely different energy. This facility has the opportunity to do that. It serves these functions during the day, these functions after school time, these functions for people who can work 24 hours a day, these things in the evening, so that the fluidity goes through time, goes through the diversity of people, their needs, their economic, their sociological structures. So what am I saying? There is no box, I don't think, inside of it. Thank you.
I came back from Seattle and we end up in this thing. And as I actually go around in the West Coast, I find that there are a lot of community spaces that are created, which has some of an energy that I don't think this particular building is going to have. For one thing, I think the developers are sort of catering themselves to their expertise, rather than absorbing what the community wants. I think there's this two big spaces that we're, which I'm going to call the anchor, the Makerspace and the Restaurant, but that's kind of restricting the use of our public space. And the reason why the restaurant is there is because you have the expertise to get the restaurant, to cater to this. You know something? In Portland, I can go take cooking classes at Salatah, I just sign up for a class there. Now, the cooking license is not a special thing, you don't need a restaurant to do it. I was working with Olea Restaurant a couple of months ago, and that's what he wants to do. He says, you know, I'm going to have a cooking class in the back of my restaurant. So this doesn't need a public resource. What we need is try to identify things that need that space, the dance studio, the artist, a collaborative that can cater to all of these different needs. So I don't know how to energize this, I'm not a public activist, I'm just a private citizen. I've been involved in this conversation before I left for Seattle, I come back and we have this, which is not that much of an improvement of the ideas that has gone on during the time. I think we need to engage the people who are going to end up using this place.
Thank you.
Good evening, Deborah Ru, I live at 1679 Avenue, North Cambridge, and I'm also the Executive Director of Justice Start Corporation, and I am a member of the Foundry Advisory Committee. And I just want to say, I'm glad to see so many people turn out tonight. This isn't the first presentation. I was actually quite surprised when it was a public presentation, it was in July, that they had so few public people coming, and I thought, well, that's really interesting. It must mean that people were okay with what was happening, so that's how I kind of interpreted it. But I'm very glad you're on here. I think seeing those numbers does point out kind of one of the challenges of a project like this, when you see it took a cost of $36 million, and I guess by the time we get to build it, it actually could bring even more. And so I think the Advisory Committee was very careful, and the Advisory Committee, I think you ought to refresh your memories about who's on it, it had people who, I'm correct, sent nonprofits, development, housing, et cetera, and other folks were artists, people from the STEM field, as well as someone in real estate development who could understand some of those concepts. So it was kind of a diverse group of people on the Advisory Committee, and we did look a lot. I mean, we two were somewhat concerned when there was one bidder, or one interested developer. I'm excited about this project in terms of how it's been presented. I've been to District Hall, which these folks have been involved in. I've been there numerous times for numerous nonprofit kinds of activities that were going on there. It's a vibrant kind of space in the Seaboard District, and if people have been there, I'd suggest trying to do a little filter to that, so see somewhat, I think this will wind up being even very different than District Hall is, where they just look up, see that people have run a facility like that, and it can have multiple uses, and I love the prior speaker who talked about, you know, different things at different times of the day, and that's what I would imagine this building being, that it's a great resource. I think the fallback, if this doesn't happen, this, you know, doesn't go forward in this way, is probably another five-year process, or a number of years of process, and I would be worried about that, as well as the city needing to make a commitment to put in $36 million in total or something, to make it viable, to meet everyone's needs. So I think, you know, when I look at this, I think somebody has to get a return on their investment. I'm in kind of the real world. I have an idealism, I also have what it really takes to make the building operate, from someone who has operated many buildings in my career, I know that you have to have revenue sources in order to build, so thank you, and I'm glad that everyone's turned up today.
Thank you. There's a few more public commenters. We just started 10, 15 minutes late, so we'll go about 10, 15 past the hour, we'll have about half hour of council discussion. Jesse Flynn.
Good evening. My name is Jessie Flynn, I live at 2 Clinton Street, and thank you for having us all tonight. I'm also glad to see everyone show up. I am interested in this project as a Cambridge citizen, I also live next to the Foundry, and I'm also a landscape architect, working with a local nonprofit design firm. And so I come at this from a few different perspectives, and it's super interesting to see what you've all come up with, and I love the way that the public and private interests are coming together in this building. So what I would say is, I think that it's a great precedent that everyone is setting, because as you can see, there's lots of interest for public space, and I think that all of those desires aren't going to fit into the Foundry. So there's lots of opportunity for future marriages of public and private interest in other buildings around the city. And I think the important part of this is the pre-design process, the public engagement, and really then balancing what needs come out of that public engagement process, with what resources does the city have? And then this discussion like this evening about how much does the city put in, and then how much is it private investment and return on investment, and then making sure that those match when they go out to RFP. And as somebody who's a designer, we need to decide how much time we're putting in in the office on an RFP. And so something, having realistic expectations and the needs, so that we can put in our best design work to serve the public, is an important thing that is consideration for all of us. So I'm just excited to see what goes in the future and how this process applies to future public and private partnerships. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Chris Abad, Rayu, Ajinada, Erin Dawson.
Hi, I'm Not, this is Ben Nick. I'm Erin Johnson, I'm the Executive Director at the Community Arts Center, we're located in the port, and I've been running programming there for close to 80 years. And I wasn't actually planning on speaking, but I wanted to hit on a few points. First of all, I feel really thankful to have so many experts around the table, and people who really have done a lot of development projects that focused on retail development and innovation, both in Cambridge and in Boston, and Mafido obviously brings that up as the innovation center, seed startup, you know, and also having, doing the for-profit Makerspaces, expertise in retail, as I said, there's a lot at the table, and the diversity and the Advisory Committee, I think, is there. What I didn't see from the proposal was diversity in the expertise of the leadership who will be managing the space. The expertise that I miss is somebody who is an expert in Cambridge, who is an expert in our diverse communities, and who really is an expert in what this building says it's about, which is reaching people who are currently excluded from the innovation community. And I think a lot of that expertise lies in our nonprofit, here, our community here in Cambridge. We have more nonprofits in the city than many other cities, and I really encourage you all to not reinvent the wheel. There are many uses that you've outlined in this building that nonprofits in the city are already offering, and these are nonprofits that don't have spaces. I'm actually not talking about my own, I'm talking about my colleagues. And the building should be creating real partnerships with these nonprofits and giving them space that is long-term and permanent. Actually, what compelled me to speak was when you said you heard from nonprofits that they wanted flexible space. I actually hear from my colleagues the opposite. We want space that we rely on, we want space that is affordable to us, and we want to share in the leadership and in your vision. And we bring that expertise in working with communities that are hard to reach. So I think it is, I would never develop a building on my own. I would call in somebody like Mafido who has that expertise. And I really, I don't think it's responsible of the project to try to reach diverse communities if that isn't your expertise. There are many people who could help with that, so I encourage you to do that. And I think the other piece that I worried about is the focus on things that are temporary, changing. You know, I think in Cambridge, we have a lot of change, and we want to also reanchorman something that is longstanding, permanent, and that we can trust. So I encourage you to have both uses. I think Cambridge can be both things, and to just partner. Thank you.
Thank you. I saw Olivia and one other woman back there who want to speak, so Olivia, it's you, and then someone else on that, after that, two people.
Hi, everyone, thank you so much. My name is Olivia Dan Brozio, I live at 273rd Street. I am a full-time professional theater maker. I'm the artistic director of British Repertory Theater. I teach in the Department of Theater Arts at MIT, and I'm a professional actor and director. So I have a series of questions first that I understand will not be answered at this moment. They all pertain to this flexible, not-quite-black box. Here are my questions. Is there an elevated stage, and if not, will you provide risers for the seating? Is there costume shop space to build costumes, to store costumes, and to launder costumes? It is actually a rule of the Professional Stage Actors Union that aftergarments that touch the skin every night during performance must be laundered that night for the next day's performance. So having a washer and dryer there is essential if you want professional actors. Is there a grid to support lighting instruments, and will there be lighting stock? Is there a sound system? Is there a stage management booth with the proper equipment so that the stage manager can call the show? Are there private dressing rooms that are separate for men, women, and children? Do they have a shower? That is also a rule of the Professional Stage Union, is that actors must be able to shower after their performance. Also that children should be separate from the male actors and the female actors, if there are children in the show. Is there a box office space? Whom, if anyone, did you consult with from the professional theater community in discussing the black box? And if the answer to that is no one, I am available. Finally, if you think you need a restaurant to make a space viable for 18 to 24 hours a day, you do not. I live at 273rd Street, there are so many restaurants around there, there is not even a place for me to buy milk and eggs, but there are so many places for me to have a drink and an exorbitantly priced salad. Artists will rent that space from you every single minute of every day. You will be astonished. Finally, just to reiterate my last colleague and fellow citizen who spoke, by making a space flexible for everyone, you are possibly making it practical for no one. Thank you.
All right, yes, a colleague here in the front row, and then I'd like to move to seven and Susan. Okay.
Carol, we live 257 Charles Street.
Sorry, can you say your name one more time?
Carol Woolley. And we have been working on this for a long time, this project. The reality is that the concept was have, for the neighborhood, the basement and first floor, so that CIC has this third and fourth floors. floor, so that CIC has this third and fourth floors. That way, someone like Michael Delia from the San House can love that basement and first floor well. In these tables, there is more space and art and everything else can be combined into that space. But we need to be on the table to move this forward in a feasible and quick way. Thank you.
Thank you. How is that?
Good evening. My name is Teresa Bednick. I live at twenty Maple Avenue. I'm also the director of Transition House, which is a nonprofit at Cambridge, the community's domestic violence resource for forty years. I'm largely speaking here this evening, though, as a citizen who's watched this process over quite a number of years. I really do think that this has been a very interesting meeting, and I thank everyone for their participation. There's true energy around this and clearly a tremendous amount of thought from many, many different stakeholders. And I think that's important and it's great that an issue like this is galvanizing so much creative energy. But creating and sustaining the city that we all keep saying that we want and need depends on a different kind of thinking. Equal amounts of creativity and energy for sure, but probably a kind of thinking that's not quite so bottom-line driven. I can't emphasize this enough, and you've heard this from other people, some of whom are my close colleagues, diversity of use. And I truly appreciate the kind of time and space dimensionality that the developers have thought about here. We all do that all the time in all of the spaces that we manage and use. But diversity of use does not translate into our diverse community actually using that What I'd like to suggest here is that the ROI for our community is space that truly serves this community. And that requires authentic community input in the use, the design, and meaningful, quote, "space-making," unquote. And this has all the potential and quality. Thank you.
Thank you, Teresa. Was there one more person in the back row? Okay. Thank you. And then I'll have council discussion.
Seven, seven, four-three, Harris Street. Thank you, Mr. Chair. We've all followed this process for a very long time. And I think, I guess my, all my comments just boil down to try, and if best you can or the committee can or the council can, to use the announced negotiations that are hopefully upcoming to try to work through all these issues. It's been many, many years of process. We've had a very hard time finding teams that want to come forward. I've had the opportunity to talk to some of those teams. I think this is a creative team from this. And it's just hard work, and I hope that we can use this negotiation to try to work through a lot of these issues. At the end of the day, I think, I mean, there's the space allocation issues. I think a lot of this is going to come down to the management of the space itself. And that, I hope you and other councillors will quiz all these people about that, because I think at the end of the day, that's what's going to really make this work and operate. I do believe, or my only request to everybody here is that we don't end up with a monoculture there. I'm not so afraid of money either from the city side, when I think the city probably will need to put in some money as well as, and from private money as well. I actually think that the way forward in twenty-first, I need to look at a mix of private dollars together to bring people across skin colors, economic backgrounds, et cetera, into spaces where we can have real meaningful conversations about how to call the color as a community. So I'm not so afraid of the different colors and streams. But if we end up with a CIC light or a virtual cafe, I will be disappointed on these many years on this. It's one we can do, and I look forward to it in the council. Thank you.
Okay, great. Thank you. With that, I'll hand motion to those public comments. Debra, I'll give her a say hi. Hi. Yes, that is. So we'll now proceed to the final fifth of council discussion. And I'll go to my colleagues, Councilor Mar, Councilor Kelly, Councilor Debra. If we could each keep it to about five minutes, I'll try to wrap up in ten, and maybe we'll be out there by about ten or four past. I do think that if you have stayed this long, that this may be the important part in terms of next steps, in terms of what we're learning, what we're trying to do, in terms of what's possible for this building. Obviously, what came before is also the important part of the San Dome community. Good evening, persons.
I would reiterate what I said earlier, which is I don't know how the space works. So whatever space works best from a professional standpoint to give us the community space that we want works. I wouldn't be bound by a particular number, which is what the council said long ago. I also caution people not to have unreasonable expectations about what this is going to be. It's not going to be perfect for everyone, and I think we have to concede a lot to the expertise of the people who are running it in terms of what actually would work on a day-to-day basis. I just don't want it to be the money part that is holding us back from what is best.
Thank you. Councilor Debra?
Thank you. Well, I think this was really helpful. I was not involved in the initial visioning of this, so I'm sort of catching up. But what I can hear is that we could use probably about ten boundary buildings from the laundry list of things that we need. We need a performance space that's open to the community, that's equipped with costume rooms and laundry and lights and essentially a black box theater. That would be wonderful. That doesn't exist really for a community. That's a big investment. We need permanent artist studios. I mean, shared workspace for an artist, which to me seems completely impractical unless you are an artist who is entirely come on doing conceptual art and you never carry an easel or a piece of paper with you. We need meeting rooms for our community groups that don't have any revenue. We need community meeting rooms for nonprofits that do have revenue, that can sell tickets to a forum or something. I mean, I think some of the events at District Hall are things that, you know, established nonprofits hold at events and get speakers and that sort of thing. But then there are, you know, little grassroots community groups who just want to have a room to have ten people brainstorm. We may not need a restaurant. I kind of agree with that. We certainly could use some kind of market in that neighborhood, whether it's, you know, quasi-farmer's market with staples that are also useful, like milk and eggs and butter. We could possibly use a test kitchen for entrepreneurs who are trying to, you know, create new jams or food products. We could use a maker's space. We could use classrooms to teach people all of these skills. So already, we've eaten up a lot of space. And I think with the physical additions that this group is envisioning, we're looking at something over eighty thousand square feet, and that goes pretty fast. So at some point, we're going to have to make some choices. I hear a lot about community space, and community is one of those words that's extremely broad. Which community are we talking about? Are we talking only about people who live in East Cambridge? Are we talking about, you know, nonprofits who are based in East Cambridge? Or, you know, it's pretty nebulous. And I realized that this originally was gifted to us as a result of the development that had a huge impact on the East Cambridge neighborhood. So that group certainly feels a proprietary interest in it. But, you know, again, it's sort of hard to say, well, you know, you're an artist, but you're not an East Cambridge artist, so you go to the bottom of the priority list. I think a lot of people have noted that space management will definitely be key, and I think we could consider some way to have community involvement in that, but I don't see it being managed by the community. I, you know, I think it takes, I think it takes some experience managing something like that, and I wouldn't want to just sort of say, well, we'll figure it out. We need professionals to do that, and let's get them advice, and let's choose people who are experienced in managing this sort of thing. I am not, because of how long this has all taken and how long it will take to do the physical renovation, I would like to keep working with this group and figure out how we can do that. I don't want to throw the baby out with the bathwater. This group has invested a lot of time, money, in their time and thought in it, and they're some of the most talented people in the community who do this kind of thing. So I think it would be sort of rational to just say, you know, we'll find somebody else to do this when we don't really know what this is. There's a lot, seems to be a lot of confusion about what we really want this one building to achieve. I agree with Craig that if it's the money, if, you know, we're talking about borrowing fourteen million, giving out equity of fourteen million, maybe the city relieves one of those fourteen millions probably in borrowing. And, you know, I want this, I want this to be a place that's a magnet, that welcomes people from across different communities, and I really think we can't put so much on this one building that the whole thing crumbles. And I see it sort of slipping through our hands because everybody wants a piece of it. And I think that just points to how space-starved Cambridge has become for things that aren't business propositions, that don't pencil out. And, you know, that's an unfortunate fact of where we are in 2016. Thanks.
Thanks. Councilor Mar still? We'll come back to Councilor Mar. I'll try to get some of my own perspectives as measured away as I can muster, which may be challenging. I have great respect for this team. I have great respect for the CRA, and I have great respect for the city. But in the game of telephone that happened between us, to the city, to CRA, to the applicants, and in losing so many applicants along the way, some things were missed. So without placing blame anywhere else, I think it's my fault. We're supposed to be open to committee meetings. I thought I had the right amount of meetings with folks who said, we're on our way now, to give the sense that I've heard from today's public comment, or that I've heard repeatedly from my colleagues across this process, that we would achieve not what we have today, but actually much closer to what we heard in the audience. And I don't necessarily agree that there's so many uses that our requests or our needs as a community are out of scope or going to burden them. It's going to sit through our hands on the contrary. I think that by listening to the community, we will actually find, as the council found, that consensus is just almost right there. The difficulty we've burdened ourselves with is the fiscal one. We started from the wrong fiscal starting place, and it'd be impossible to satisfy the needs that the community is shouting about. And then we're saying, you're shouting, it's never going to work together. No, they're not shouting, it's never going to work together. They're shouting. No, I'm saying, I'm saying, I'm not putting words in your mouth. I'm saying people are shouting in a positive way. The volume is high. They're emoting, they're telling us what they need, and we're not achieving those things because of the fiscal starting place, not because anyone has that. What we have is a commitment to community, to culinary, to entrepreneurship, to flex space, to one-time and recurring openness to events. And we have a track record here of success. But I don't want to gloss over that work. I don't want to gloss over the experience of the advisory committee, of the city, of the CRA. Not what I'm trying to do. I'm trying to talk about what we have gotten to. Another benefit, we've gotten to a beautiful, high-end building. It truly is magnificent, set of renderings, set of visions. But there are things missing. I'm going to spend probably five, maybe ten minutes talking to you about what I think I've heard from the audience, what I've heard personally about what's missing, and then the conclusion is pretty poignant, I think. Twenty percent of space for community is dedicated space is the wrong percent. I think we literally said as a council, it's a majority and a vast majority of community space with a minimum of commercial. Why? Why have commercial at all? With a minimum of commercial for form entrepreneurship, anchor professionalism, and anchor innovation to create a diversity of use and interesting synergies, especially with the job training outlet. The for-profit isn't there for the financial aspect. The fact that twenty percent, or ten percent, or five percent commercial space might help your bottom line is a fantastic side effect of what the community has said it wants. But it is not by any means the main factor or the main driving force to make consideration in this building. When I taught at school in Museum of Fine Arts, I would go into the Mission Hill graduate student studios, and as far as the eye can see, people are making, people are building their lives and their business and their expression. And it is just papers, ink, and charcoal, everything that you could imagine that's good and healthy and culturally relevant for their social lives, for their economic well-being, for their personal expression. And there's nothing like that in Cambridge. There are people who yearn for that in Cambridge, and they yearn for some kind of permanence and synergy that is not being imagined visaged by this project. At eleven PM and at seven AM, a mutually learning, thriving, messy, artistic community that overlaps heavily with the making community, that overlaps heavily with an entrepreneurial community, with a community that cares not just about looking into who gets what space and how we can manage it, but looking out and spending just as much time reaching those socioeconomic assets, families, and neighborhoods, which we literally never meet and reach as a city to the threshold that we set for ourselves. That's what the building is anchoring. And so when we have two floors of coworking space, I say to myself, how in the world is that coworking space going to anchor that outreach? Or that artistic use? Or that synergy that is supposed to have a preponderance in the building? All the factors of success are there in fifty thousand or eighty thousand in your vision, square feet. All the factors are there to have the space and the man and woman power and flexible performance space. I often say that Central Square is great for startups because it has Radio Shack, and it has All Night Clover, and it has Blick, and then Artisan Craftsman. If you need to make something, chances are, you either have to wait five minutes, or if it's three AM, five hours, to get exactly what you need to continue performing, doing your livelihood justice, and doing your community well. You can have that all in one building. It's Cambridge of all places, and Kendall Square, and you can have it for everyone. But you can't have it with this model. I think people go travel, I appreciate you for those comments, are saying, why some of these choices? Because you're good at it? Or because that's what we're actually asking for as a community? That's not on you. That's on the fiscal starting place. You have to now, you're in the direction that is closer to your experience and/or closer to the financial realm. I really liked what Justin had to say about anchors. I think it fits very much into what I was saying about synergy. And I liked what another person said about energy. Community first, then others. If you harness this energy to arrive at the correct layout and the correct process for this. If I had two buildings, one of them would be this building you proposed. It's a great building. It's a totally different building. It's a great, almost media lab meets community-facing, large atrium, like a boutique hotel lobby. And that is not correct for the building we actually have. I saw in the original presentation in July that one of the inspirations is District Hall, which is a little high-end, I think, for what's being matched by the community here. But there's also that Denver's The Source. Denver's The Source has fifteen-plus community branches working to get their businesses off the ground. I don't see that inspiration reflected here quite that way. I don't see it in the Black Box Theater. I don't see it in the assembly. I don't see it in the type of ownership that could be done on the third and fourth floors. And I don't see it in the time-space continuum. Thanks to Councilor Debra. I don't see it in the time-space continuum, the thirty percent of space that is supposed to be used as a kind of at-large space, that it is undiscounted or available or whatever is below market. I don't know. Not preponderance. I think it's safe to say to the stakeholders, I'm feeling this is the best. And if we could say that, because of where we started in this process, we weren't even able to hear the stakeholders, but we didn't conduct a full thorough exhaustive process. I want to say the CRA without placing any blame. I think it's CRA's job in the next ten years to arbitrate conflict between parties in difficult development projects. And I think the council is going to want to go to the CRA over and over and over again to get very special... to get that very special resource. And I hope that this misstep is something you look back on with pride. Because we worked hard, because everyone worked in earnest, and because we hit a type of conflict we didn't process properly. The council is definitely saying, "Properly more money, this is not going to work the way you think it's going to work." And it didn't work the way you thought it was going to work. Even if we were wrong, we had to process that. And I don't think we can know that with a new CRA, and a different council, and new city manager. All these things are to our detriment, and it's not our fault. But if we want to go forward and do these things, there's always going to be council stakeholders, city administration stakeholders, CRA stakeholders, and vast community stakeholders. And if we don't get a little bit more, quote, "Forget it" for this stage, then we're not going to have a solid conclusion, we're not going to have the praise and the sufficiency from public comment that you would want to have on a high level. This is a significant size, a space 58,000 square feet. Significant in the sense that it's a significant proportion of what a school would be. We are not putting in a significant amount of money to the city. And we're not giving, I think, credence to this type of out-of-school time and community opportunity. We're not giving them the primacy it deserves. And so we're willing to say for our kids and for equity, social equity and education and equity in our community, we're willing to put a significant fraction of a billion dollars over several years. I think we've got to be able to do the same at a very high level. I think we're not even asking that money. $20 million, something in that range compared to school. I think it's very fair to use that amount of money, to have and appropriate that amount of money, to do this for the nice. I'm not talking about building materials either, I'm talking about community engagement, uses, development. I've heard from a lot of people who didn't feel they could comment on this process, because they aren't tried, aren't tried in the process. I said all my ideas, I heard everyone else say all their ideas, and I have no idea, have you done that where I now failed? How in the world am I going to figure it out? How to follow this issue? How to make myself known? How to engage the others? And how to swear my needs and our needs, which we all heard, with what you're actually going to present with this guy? People are not dropping out of the process. And we're saying, "Well, everyone wants to..." Well, no, a lot of the people who dropped out of the process are dropping out because they have given up. And that's true for both the developer, manager candidates, and for the parts that the community needs the most. I have to call it as a council, Deveraux, if you'd love us talking about your comments, but I just said five years or slippery slope. I don't think that if we redo this process and put more money on the table, that we will take five years to do so. I think we've done a very good process over the last year, we gave the wrong starting place. Do we have to do it again? That's not a point at any point. We have to do it again. How could we possibly come to any other conclusion than to put more money on the table and to do it properly? And of course, this building is going to live through a 50-year lease, why would we not do that? Why would we not do the strongest starting trajectory? I have to apologize for the folks who put so much time in, because that obviously means this comes at the cost of your time, your energy. I would hope you would apply again, and I would understand if you didn't. And if you blamed me, you're blaming us for that. I really would understand that, and I would have to take that. What I'm standing up for here is what I hear as a strong majority, yearning for not just negotiating someone, starting with more, designing more, reaching out more, discussing more, getting more, and then having a tough conversation. We could be having a tough conversation starting today, but it's not even the basis on which to have those conversations. A lot of questions of the community rate, I hope. I mean, I don't know if we go into detail with Olivia's questions on Black Box Theater. I don't know if we go with Justin's questions on anchors and synergy. I don't know if we go to Monica's questions on helping the community have more authority and governance in affecting their 90% ownership, or 30% ownership. But we have probably about seven minutes, and I encourage those of you who are here to engage.
I didn't want to be harsh on the public commentators or anybody, but we usually say no clapping, just because sometimes the clapping gives the other side the wrong message, and you're not with them as well. So appreciate you clapping for me, and you can do that when you go home. I'll try to learn from your clapping during tonight's meeting.
So, Mr. Chairman, if we could respond to some of your comments. The last point you made is really an issue for the CRA and the city, but we can speak to what we have proposed and who we are. One thing I wanted to make sure we addressed is in how we run this, and this has come up in different ways, there's an element of trust in it. And we think we're trustworthy in this situation. We, in terms of non-for-profits and community activity, CIC as a profit-making company is extremely dedicated to community and nonprofit activity. We have over 100 nonprofits in our space in Cambridge and in Boston, just in the spaces. We donate a considerable amount of space for meeting activities for non-for-profits and community organizations as well. We do that at all our centers, in Cambridge as well as elsewhere. In St. Louis, our center donates space to Ford through Ferguson, which is an organization that came out of the Ferguson incidents in the community divisions. We've donated space in Miami to another group, the Sophia Project, that works with abused women. In Rotterdam, we have a very successful program in terms of the impact. We have, through a program called Restyle, which is for Syrian refugees in Rotterdam, where we've teamed up with the university, we donate the space, and they just graduated their first program. We do a lot more of that, and we do that because we're committed to doing that. We're not just about space. We are about building community, and we're very involved in the community. So I know people are particularly used to people in a development role or in a profit-making role having that kind of mission, but in fact, we do. And so it's why we came to the table, it's why we're interested in this, we like doing unusual things. There's a big challenge here, and we do that. And so we're interested in pursuing this and trying to do something that's impactful that respects much of what we've heard tonight, and I would say Jesse can comment as well. Much of what we've heard are things we can respond to. The theater discussion, we haven't really designed that space. We've got a box on the plan, but there's a lot more that can be designed. We do want it to be flexible. Many people we've heard from here tonight are people we want to sit down with and see what else could we do with you, and what might work and what might not. We do have the constraints, there's no question about that. We've got to respect those constraints, and we've got to balance all these issues. But we think we're up to the task, and we've done it in other places, and we think we can do it here. Go ahead.
Yeah, I think the only thing I'll add is that, I mean, what came out of the public comment and some of your comments is what we know to be true based on our prior work and based on our shared vision with the community for the Foundry, which is that partnerships are absolutely critical. And that's why I started my comments with, "We're going to rely on the community and rely on those in the council and the city to help us kind of forge those ties with the community and find the right partners." And, you know, we were shaking our heads, I think it was Olivia who made the comment about, "Are we going to manage the building?" We actually believe that we can serve, we can be exploited by the city and the community to maintain and develop and design and shovel the snow and create a platform for the community to use the building. And those individual operators, whether it is of certain art space, certain fabrication space, performance space, we're going to need experts to do that. That is not us. We are not going to be the ones operating those spaces. And if you look at the collective work between our two groups, while we're not experts at all that stuff, I think we're really good at listening. I think we're really good at finding great partners. And after this has been about for us, the other thing we've learned, when we look across predominantly North America at the spaces that work, one thing is that most of them have developed in a very organic way. And we were charged through this process with coming up with a program, presenting to the community, something that works on day one. And that's challenging. The thing we've really focused on has been, and this is the thing that a lot of these spaces that develop organically do a really great job at, is lowering the barriers of entry for diverse groups and uses to use space. And making sure that the space that we're providing for the community is not just an afterthought, but is actually great space, great meeting space, great space to train kids, great space for workforce development, great space for those uses that we all collectively deem should be housed in the Foundry. And that was important to us, and I think the other thing that shouldn't be lost is that although, what is exciting about tonight is that we've always viewed getting through the RFP and being designated as the moment at which we start our conversation in our community process. And there of course has been a lot of conversation that happened as we formulated our RFP, but I think Brian would agree, a lot of what we put our intellectual rigor into was figuring out how do we restart this building, make it occupiable, make it usable to solve the construction and design challenges, and also the financing challenges. And they're large, and we've done our best at that. We respect and appreciate critiques and feedback, and we'll always remain open to those as long as we're involved.
Thanks. I'd like to say something in response, and I have, Councilor Deveraux did send this statement that I'd like to read on his behalf, that I think is applicable. My response is that there is a difference between working with partners to tap their knowledge and to have them own curated space, or to have a lot of space that's curated of art, than to do art and to create a hot, messy core for synergistic hands-on learning, art performance, and nonprofit action. And so to say we're going to work with partners, if those partners aren't specialists in creating that type of space, you hear about Shenzhen and China, something that couldn't be recreated, you know, they say MIT, and then the area on Kendall Square, this couldn't be replicated, the academics, the core there. In a space like this, you're trying to create a synergy on a micro level. It's not about who you, you know, the couple of partners you were handling, the Thursday Adventure Cafe, or the one night a week of social equity and lower-cost allocations or whatever it is. It's about a consistent and interwoven... And that doesn't just come from the partners, that comes not only from your expertise, but it comes from giving the community the ownership. I want to read what Councilor Deveraux has to say. Uh, sorry, vice chairman, I got to say. Councilor Deveraux. "I apologize for not being here to attend tonight's meeting of the Foundry. Please present my comments to the group. Foundry offers a unique opportunity for our community. For the past several years, there's been a great deal of discussion regarding the most appropriate use of this space, and I appreciate everyone who's taken part in those discussions. I'm eager to see the project move forward. As excited as I am about the various possibilities, I want to make sure we do this right and create a true community anchor, not just for East Cambridge, but for the city as a whole. Early conversations about community space, artist space, and a stage, to name a few, presented great promise. As the conversation went on, it became clear that there'd be a need for some type of funding mechanism to help support these various community benefits. Even with that understanding, I believe the majority of the council is clear, considering that we do not want a need for outside funding to get in the way of being creative with this space for the community. I want to reiterate my position on this. The Foundry is a rare opportunity, and this is a time when we should use our financial stability in the long term to benefit, for the benefit of the community. I'll be very disappointed if we end up with a building that is more of an innovation space for companies rather than a true community space, just because the city was unwilling to invest additional funds. Thank you for all for your time, and I look forward to taking part in additional funding." But those from Vice Mayor McGovern, to offer him a home suit, Deveraux, who has a very balanced approach on this, and I think I'm hearing you correctly, wants to see it move forward. I don't want to see it move forward. I don't think the audience wants to see it move forward, I don't think the community wants to see it move forward, and I think that difference of opinion is valid. I don't see how if we went forward, we wouldn't have a more activist-y response at this point. I'm not talking about me, I'm talking about the people who are activists for a living caring about this space. There's fingers in the hand, in the audience. Seriously, guys, I mean, there's hundreds of thousands of people who are looking at this space to achieve something, and everyone thought that they were just the one person dropping out, because it's not getting it, it's not getting it. There's tons of people who think it's not getting it. I mean, I need to appropriate money to operate it. So I can't really, with two people in committee, now make a motion to do something serious, but I would seek your help in how we appropriate this money to the city manager, acting city manager, and how we now go about doing this properly.
You know, I do want to just say a few things. I do feel like this has been an important conversation, and I do want to assure you that everybody is listening to what everybody is saying, as we have been all along. You know, I guess I would say, I mean, just to reiterate, we are really all very committed to the vision and objectives here, and having this facility be something that is really a very important community resource. And I'd say that because we're still at the beginning of the process, that I feel like, you know, the Cambridge Innovation Center and Graffiti O really have the experience and have a willingness to really try to explore this, and with the CRA, and we're just beginning the sublease process. I think that, personally, I feel like it is premature to say that it absolutely doesn't meet the vision and objectives. I guess I would say that it is the CRA's responsibility at this point to be negotiating the sublease. And I think that if, and I think, you know, they'll probably know fairly soon, but let them go in earnest to be able to address a lot of the issues that have been raised. And if it's not a facility that's able to meet the vision and objectives, they'll come back and we'll be talking again about whether or not, you know, there's a recommendation for the city to allocate more money. But I think at this point in time, right now, my opinion is that it is too premature, and that we need some additional conversations to really flesh out exactly how much we can negotiate and be able to achieve with this team, because I think it is a very experienced team.
To the Chair. So my opinion is that I need to continue to follow through with our governance and the protocol and the robust process that we have had. So thus, the leadership for the CRA is the CRA Board, and I cannot, sitting here, make any decisions about the process, just to be clear. I also cannot make any decisions about leaving anyone else's funding. The one thing I would say through the process, and I apologize to anyone who is not aware of where we meet and when we meet and when the Foundry Advisory Committee was selected and so forth, I think whenever there's a process, there's more people who learn about things. And so we can work to make sure that the process forward continues to be something that everyone is aware of, that wants to be aware of. The CRA Board meets on the third Wednesday of most months at 5:30 at the Cambridge Police Station. So it is likely at this point in time that through discussions with our Chair, we will have a Foundry discussion item at our meeting in October, which is October 19th. So in the end, they are the brokers of decision-making for our organization. We will continue to have conversations with partners in the community who we have been having a lot of conversations with. We will continue to talk to the city, and we would like to be able to continue talking to CIC to see where we can take this project. I also would say that the process is fully available if anyone wants to see where we went through any number of sources, including our website. I know I'm going to sound like Hillary Clinton and just add a debate point to my website, but we do put just about everything we've done up there. And so if anyone is concerned that there were missteps along the way, or anything that was hidden from view, I would debate that point. So, and I'm not saying that you said that, I'm there to comment to some of the folks that, and, you know, if we weren't found, then here we are. So I would invite the CRA Board- So I would invite that the CRA board continues to be open to a process and discussion at this point in time. So if that's, so if Fred Sparr is not having a forum, that's where I am.
Here to wrap up again to my end, and with great respect, acting city manager, your I remember when I was told the same thing at the beginning of the process, listen, work with us, it will work on four, about $6 million, and we will make it happen. Consultants are telling us this is a sure thing, and if it's not a sure thing, we'll come back and appropriate the money. But after the time to come back was long ago, the council didn't have an overlapping period with any of these meetings, wasn't really invited and engaged. But moreover, many other stakeholders also weren't fully under the process, and that's the job of proactive organizing, going out and reaching the real, authentic feedback, not just the, I wrote my thing a few days ago, people are really trying to tell you. That this process did not succeed among many dimensions, including that one, this process did not succeed in coming back to appropriate the money. And now I'm sorry that I don't have any confidence that I can come back and appropriate the money if I let you guys off the vote now. So what I'm asking for is for you to start the process over with more money in your pocket. I'm asking the CRA very directly to do that. I think I'm reading Councilor McGovern correctly, that he's saying to do that. I think I'm reading Councilor Kelly, that he's saying to do that. I think that if we had a vote today in the main chamber, I really hope I'm not speaking out of turn for any words in people's mouths, but what I heard last council meeting was that there's a majority of this council that's telling you to do this properly, not because this is a part of the process in which we should have to tell you that, but because we already told you that at the beginning, and we want to listen to, which is egregious. So with that, I thank everyone for coming, and I thank you all for your help. I hope we start over properly.